I'd like to call to order the, this regular meeting of the Pickaway City Schools Board of Education. It's Thursday, October 20th. Please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need to boost up the mood before the meeting.
All right, Jeremy, please call roll.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Mr. Bostick.
Here.
Mr. Ford.
Here.
Mrs. Mcmackin.
Here. Okay, everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from September. And if there's no changes to be made, can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and our meeting minutes from September are approved. And on with the agenda for tonight, if there are no changes to be made here, can I get?
Move an agenda.
Oh, okay.
It'll be item 11 on, for item 11, personnel agenda to be removed.
To be removed?
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't tell you that prayer, too.
Oh, that's all right. Okay, any other changes? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve our agenda?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and tonight's agenda is approved. Moving on to our Upper Valley Career Center report, Mr. Bostick, do you have an update?
Well, really just, things have gotten off to a good start when we had our meeting just after ours. And, you know, the one thing, if you notice also on Looney Road, their new driveway, you know, for the bus and stuff has really helped alleviate some of the hazards and things they were having, they were creating, you know, some problems at dismissal, so seems to be working pretty well, so. And they're off to a good start, and I think they're looking at possibly expanding more satellite-type things is what they're looking at here, so.
Cornerstone opened this week, I heard.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, if nobody's ever eaten there, lunchtime, that's a great place. Their restaurant, they have the students do it, so.
Is it only open certain times of day, lunchtime?
You can Google it or look it up, and it'll tell you the menu, they change the menu, I think, every three weeks, and they'll tell you their hours.
It's really.
Sometimes they do close for a special event, so you might want to check that, but they're good.
They do like reservations, if you just call and tell them, you know, we're going to have three come at, you know, noon. They appreciate that, that way they plan ahead, but yeah, it's really good, it really is. Students do a great job.
Nice. Okay, thank you. Um, no one here from the public to speak on agenda items, so we can move on to the treasurer's agenda with Mr. Hiddle.
Good evening, I put a sheet in front of you, it looks like this. We finished the first quarter of our fiscal year, and so it's always good to go back and look through the expenditures and see sort of where we've ended up for the first quarter. We expect everything to be at 25% or below, so you'll see as you go through there, personnel, services, the line 3.01, we're at 25% of our budget as far as salaries are concerned, 24% with retirement insurance benefits, 20% with purchase services, 30% with supplies, which is normal because we buy supplies for our students at the beginning of the school year, so that one always runs a little high. And then capital outlay is at 42%, and again, with the renovations that are going on in our buildings, different things cropped up that we've had to cover through that process, and so that's what's coming out of that line item. We look at the whole thing in totality, we're at 24% for the first quarter through, so we are, like I said, what I've been saying, we're on target, we've been on target, maybe a little under budget at this point, so everything is going well in that regard. Were there any other questions about the monthly reports that you had available to you? Next item I have up there tonight is recommend board approval of the alternate tax budget for fiscal year '24. This is approving us to use the alternate tax budget, and then I will bring you the alternate tax budget next month, and then we'll approve that and get that off the county auditor's office. Item number three on there is to approve the medical, dental, and eye rates and life insurance rates for the 2022 calendar year. We received a .1% reduction in health insurance rates for the, I think I changed that to 2023 since I heard myself talk. So, I meant '22, but it is '23, right, that we're talking about? But for 2023, our rates have went down .1%, that's a half a percent decrease over two years. We're getting people that are getting, a normal standard year is 8%, but we're getting double digits in most places, 12 to 16% increases, so we're actually, getting two years' worth of reductions is unheard of, and a lot of that, again, goes back to our staff and the buy-in that we have with our insurance committee and our staff on using EMS and trying to get the right health insurance for all of our employees and what their needs are, and we only really heard good things about how it's been turning out, so everything's working there. We've also implemented Drexel, AeroRx, and we've got multiple channels for people to get their prescriptions filled, and that's also saved most of the money that we've saved this year, which is good because our stop-loss insurance actually went up quite a bit, so we've been able to counterbalance that with the savings that we've had in claims, so it all panned out again this year. So keep looking for new and better ways to do things and trying to stay ahead of it, but like with anything with inflation, I can't tell you what '24 will look like because it's coming fast, and as things move on, of course, providers are going to want to renegotiate their contracts with insurance carriers to reflect the inflation, so we can expect that costs are still going to continue to go up. So those are the only items I have for my agenda tonight.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Jeremy? Okay. Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the treasurer's agenda?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All right, Jeremy, can you please call roll?
Mr. Ford.
Hi.
Mr. Bostick.
Hi.
Mr. Frazier.
Hi.
Mr. Mitchell.
Hi.
Mrs. Mcmackin.
Aye. Okay, the treasurer's agenda is approved. Moving on to the superintendent's report with Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. We have conferences that are coming up, and it would be a good time for the principals to tell a little bit about what the conferences are going to entail and how parents can get registered for those and what they can expect, so Ross, let's start with you at Spring Creek and do our primaries, and give the parents and the board an idea of what your conferences look like and how they get engaged with those.
Sure, yeah. I'm going to try to speak on behalf of both Spring Creek and Washington since Mr. Hughes isn't here. So yeah, our conferences are Wednesday, November 2nd, and Thursday, November 3rd. Is that right? Whatever, it was the second down on both of mine. Yeah, so what's to expect at our conferences is, this is an opportunity for us to have parents into the building and talk about, obviously, where student progress is with their child. We also take this time to discuss, parents, where students should be at certain benchmarks, the middle of the year, Christmas time, and then also at the end of the year, so teachers take that time to, again, show where students are, but then also show exemplars or examples of where students should be at those certain times of the year, so that helps continue that communication between home and school strategies and plans to implement, to help that student progress throughout the school year. We had at-risk conferences for some of our students a few weeks ago, so some of those parents have already attended those conferences, but ultimately, we still are trying to target all parents to come to these, or as many as we can, so that we can have these conversations. Again, very, very important that we have them so that we can be on the same page with what's happening at school and home. So, I mean, that's the crux of it. It's just another great two-way communication tool, like I said, between school and home, and it just really gives parents an opportunity to ask any questions they might have, and it's not all academic-based either, it's an opportunity to talk about whole child and all arenas of school, so that's really what we focus on in both of our buildings. Is there anything else that?
What can a parent do if they can't make those assigned times?
Yes. So, yeah, teachers are awesome, so we use a new system, it's not new, but it's our second year using my conference, so families have the opportunity to go in there and choose a time, if none of those times are convenient for them, our staff is really good about connecting with those parents and finding a time outside of conferences to meet, so that's really kind of what our process is in our building. So fortunately, we have lots of opportunities to get on in those two nights, but if not, we always make it an obligation to offer other times.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions for primary? Mr. Butler?
Thank you.
Pickle Central?
So, like the primaries, we use my conference time, we do offer three options. We can have face-to-face, we have a virtual option, we also can use our phone conference as well. Our conferences are November 2nd, 3:30 to 9:00, and November 3rd, 3:30 to 7:00. One of the things that, you know, parents kind of wonder about when I walk into conferences, what will we talk about? We'll definitely talk about the strengths of the students, all our students have strengths that we love to highlight with parents. We'll also talk about a plan to continue the growth, whether they're meeting the standards, they're exceeding the standards, or they're not. It'll come away with a team feel, a couple of things. One, this kind of sets a great example for students to show that how adults can work together for a common goal. Also, there's no doubt that we see the most growth from students when families and the school work together. So that's one of the things that we'll highlight for our parent-teacher conferences. Like Ross, if those parent-teacher conferences times don't work, please feel free to contact the school office at 937-773-2017, or contact the teacher directly via email, phone call, or class dojo. Conferences can also, some parents, since the system is in its second year, some people, you know, are hesitant to use that, but they're more than welcome to call our office or reach out to their student's teacher directly, and we can get them hooked up at the conference, so the nice thing is that the same program is used all the way, I believe, K through 12, so makes it as easy on parents as possible, so. Any questions for Pickle Central?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark, Junior High School.
I really just want to say ditto. It's basically the same thing, maybe a little bit of differentiation for us, and it's probably not that much different. At the junior high, students start to encounter more teachers sometimes with the different subjects, so using my conference time, it's a really convenient tool. Parents can schedule their blocks of time with each individual teacher, they can see as many as they want to, or if they have one or two people that they want to really focus their time with, they can do that, they can pick and choose who they'd like to see, so they get 15 minutes with those folks, and we always say, same thing that Ross and Heath have said, if you can't meet during those times, or for us, what we run into sometimes, 15 minutes doesn't seem like enough time, so we'll schedule follow-up conferences with those parents as well as needed to say, okay, let's sit down, and maybe we'll sit down as a team, the whole team of teachers with that parent if there's a concern that we need to address collectively, so we have that going as well. So other than that, you know, it's just really promoting that partnership between us and parents, and it's only going to lead to students doing better at school, both academically, socially, the whole gamut, so we really encourage parents to reach out. Again, myconferencetime.com is the name of the tool, they can just search for Pickle Junior High School there, and also, like Ross said, or I think it was Heath said, just give us a call if something's not working, and we'll get it scheduled for you the old-fashioned way. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Messick is finishing a training, so he was hoping to make it a little bit later, but they have the same setup, except theirs are just open times, so parents can go out there at any time, they can meet with staff for any issue that they have, and same thing with them, is if they are not able to make it during conference nights, which are the same dates, they can call at any time. You've been at, the freshman orientation, and one of the things Mr. Messick says is communicate, 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 so he really wants to have that opportunity for staff to meet with those parents and students, so.
So.
Do we know what the percentage of parents showing up? Anybody?
Showing up versus getting them done in terms of, some might be phone calls and so on, the percentages would be a little bit different, but you guys have an idea from last year what you had?
Last year, we were about 90%. Ours were really good last year. Yeah, we'll know, we could report that next time if you're interested.
It's probably not surprising as they get older, the percentage comes down, but we still get a good percentage.
But regardless of the grade level, it's strongly encouraged for you to set up a conference in the fall.
Yep.
Problem, no problem, right?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. Couple of announcements, we have a road rally next week, we're ending our fall season, so we like to get all the senior players from all the different sports. They do a travel to all the schools, we like for the younger kids to see the older kids so that we can build that culture. We're going to go to three different nursing homes as well, and the marching band will be there, so it's just a great day to celebrate fall season as well as kicking in that next season that's coming up for us, so. Road rally on the 27th, pep rally on the 28th at the high school, same kind of a concept, they do a really big event at the high school for the students out there and just get really hyped up, so good stuff there. Would like to announce to the public that the state OMEA band contest will be at Alexander Stadium this year, we get to host those, again, as a tribute to our wonderful stadium, that all the bands that qualify for state get to come to Pickwa. There'll be a lot of bands coming on the 30th of October, as well as the 6th of November, which are the two dates that will be doing that. It'll be just a great event, and it's another opportunity for our band to do some fundraising with parking and concessions, so it's a win-win for our community, bringing all the people in as well as our band program, so feel free to come to that event on both of those days and see some good performers. And that's it for my report.
Okay, thank you. We can proceed now with the superintendent's agenda.
Okay. Recommend the board approval of the attached list of donations and grants to the Pickle City School District. We have a sponsorship through Coca-Cola, and they put that forward this year at this time, as well as the city of Pickwa put together some money for our keypad for our fuel tanks so that we can share that resource between the city, and we talked about that a couple of board meetings ago, but they contributed money toward putting that keypad in so that the city employees can come up and punch in the numbers, so we appreciate that.
Nice.
And then we have some money from various people donated to our sports programs. Recommend board approval for the list of attached library book from PCIS for disposal and removal from the library. They go through and weed out their library collections from time with books that aren't being used or that have worn out over the time. Recommend board approval of the attached list of technology equipment for disposal and removal from the inventory of Pickle City School District. Talk about this, Lot Eric and his team strip everything that they can save and use over, he's got boxes of parts and pieces stored up in case we need them, and then otherwise, what's not usable gets thrown away. Recommend board approval of the overnight field trip to Glen Helen for our fifth graders. We used to do the Glen Helen trip. You have a question?
Yeah, I didn't see any paperwork for the fifth grade trip.
Oh, but it was attached. That was the one you made an adjustment to, Jeremy, did you?
It's on there.
Do you want to see it?
I can see it later if it's there.
Okay.
I just don't want to.
Is it up there? Is it on there?
Yeah, I just clicked it on, it was.
I mean, I can't pull it up through what you're looking at.
The attachment, Sean, do you see it?
Yes, it's there.
Okay. I can make sure you see it. It's a trip that we did for several years, and then when COVID hit, the program stopped, and we're able to bring that back now, so it's really just a reviving of that program, it's a two-night stay, fifth graders are invited to go to that, they do all their outdoor education through that program. And then recommend board approval of the overnight field trip for the Space Coast Baseball Training Facility for the Pickwa High School varsity baseball team. If you didn't see that, they're looking at going down there for some spring training, building some consensus among their team and some leadership skills, as well as watching some spring training and anticipating spring training, getting ready for that coming season. That's it for that.
Okay, thank you. There's no other questions? Can I get a motion to approve the superintendent's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Superintendent's agenda is approved. Mr. Lyons.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
The only thing I want to highlight is three additional bus drivers that will be coming on in permanent positions with us, and that have come on, they've been subbing and did all the training with us, except for one of them, he had already had some training, and then also our FS3 cooks that are so very important to being able to operate in the lunch period, that are coming on board as well. And outside of that, unless you have questions from the personnel update that I sent you on Tuesday, any questions on any of that, it's pretty short this month, which is good news, so.
What's TC1?
It's the category that they're in, so which one are you looking at there?
I was looking, I was just reading.
Oh, so that's the pay line?
Okay.
Yep.
I didn't know if that was a different position or?
Same position, different line.
Gotcha.
Other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Jeremy, please call roll.
Mr. Frazier.
Hi.
Mr. Ford.
Hi.
Mr. Mitchell.
Hi.
Mr. Bostick.
Hi.
Mrs. Mcmackin.
Aye. Okay, motion carries and our personnel agenda is approved. Nothing for old business, new business.
First item we have in new business is recommending board approval from Silco to provide traffic control gates. This is specifically to the high school, junior high area, as well as to Spring Creek as part of the grant money that we received to increase safety, so the idea behind these traffic control gates is to help prevent cars from flying through the south side of the junior high and high school, where the fueling takes place, where the buses are located, where kids are loading and unloading, and there's tons of traffic coming back and forth across that sidewalk, Jeff was shaking, he said that, yep, and the last thing we need is cars flying through there. Most of the time, we're parking buses and things and trying to, like, use them to blockade the roads, and so this will help create a more automated system where we can put them down, we can put them down for sporting events or other things as well, to be able to help control traffic in that area as well. At Spring Creek, that's to help the cars when it's time to go back behind the building on the drop-off lane, as well as their gate to the playground area that either is open all the time or becomes a problem, where it's closed and then people have a delivery, well, it's not just a short walk to, like, get to the office to, like, get the gate undone, and it's just going to make that a lot more convenient out there, as well as we're installing license plate reader cameras at all three entrances to the junior high, high school area. Down the road, you'll see, we'll use the rest of our safety grant money to add door sensors to all of our brand-new buildings with the, so that the doors open, that those alarms will be sounding when the doors are propped open, those already exist elsewhere, and improving cameras and recording devices will also be part of that process. So that's sort of the whole package of safety improvements for this round of safety money. But tonight, we're asking for the control gates.
It says on the thing, check the printout for locations, so this is directly behind the high school? Back by where the transportation office is?
No, it's not directly behind, so the first gate's going to be close to where the, coming south in between the faculty parking area and the stadium parking area, there'll be one there that will force you to drive into the faculty parking area when it's down. You won't be able to come any further into there. If you had that down for a sporting event or whatever, then that would be the stop point where if you're not handicapped and you, you know, to turn around, like, if you're handicapped, there'll be somebody there to let you in, you can do the handicap drop-off, but then otherwise, that'll be a place to where we can turn people and not have to do that. On the backside, the junior high side, you're going to have a gate right when you, there's two lanes coming out of junior high right now, on that backside, it's the farthest one south, and that will be at the very east end, so if you're coming in off of Edison, it'll be the very first drive on the left. It'll be right there. That's a one-way only, and it really should be, for the most part, should just be bus traffic that's coming out from back behind there. Otherwise, you're coming through the parking lot, which is closest to the junior high, and there'll be a gate then at the west side of that parking lot that will be down, so that it'll collect people, right now, what we have is a lot of Edison traffic and Career Center traffic that are coming through there, and so that'll hold them so that they can't come through there until our buses are dismissed. And then there'll be a gate then in between the high school and junior high that's close to where the entrance is to the junior high road, that will also be down so that traffic can't come north-south down that road until the buses are out. All the buses will have a clicker so that when they approach, they'll be able, like a garage door opener, to just pop the gate up and go. They're also tied to a key fob, that kind of thing, so that we'll be able to use them in that, or also for emergency purposes, the police will also have access, so they'll have all that, because they have to come and fill up their vehicles, not that now. I'm sure Sean gets to stop by now.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, we've got a good plan, I think, we worked through all the details, and it's just something that we've needed but never had the money to do it, and now we have the opportunity to do it, so. We still got to get all of this stuff board, so I may be back asking to approve, we got to get fiber lines and electric lines and stuff ran to all these locations, because especially with the license plate readers, they're not, like, right next to the buildings, obviously, as you're coming in on those drives, so.
Now you can get some safety awards for that.
It's on the list, safety awards, thank you. I'm sure Mr. Ford is very excited about this.
Yes.
That's that point, that's that item. If you want to vote on that one, that's fine, we can do it one at a time or individually, whatever you would like to do.
Let's do it. Can I get a motion to approve the Silco quotes?
So moved.
Second.
Jeremy, please call roll.
Mr. Frazier.
Hi.
Mr. Bostick.
Hi.
Mr. Ford.
Hi.
Mr. Mitchell.
Hi.
Mrs. Mcmackin.
Aye. Okay, this quote has been approved. Next one?
Next one on there is one of the veins of my existence. I have ordered this bus now, will be for the third time. We ordered a Ford MPV nine-passenger van, that's got to be almost two years ago. It got canceled about a year, year and a half later, and they said, you need to order a four-by-four version, all-wheel-drive version. Okay, they're going to charge you more money, oh yeah, the price went up, it's a new model year, and you got to add all-wheel-drive. Wonderful. So we nicely ordered for that one. It too gets canceled. And so finally, I get to the point where now we're looking for the third one. The third one actually has a VIN number, which means that they've actually at least produced a chassis. And so I've been trying to call and get more quotes, because when you're spending federal money, it either has to be a state contract, like the Silco contract, or it has to, you have to have at least three quotes to do it. So we have three quotes, but most of the response is, I can quote it for you, but I won't be able to get it for you. Isn't that fun? So at any rate, it's still the lowest bid out of what I received, but it's just the fact that they don't exist. They were telling me that there's going to be a three-day window where government contractors, like anybody that's in part of the government, if they need a vehicle, so city needs a truck or we need a plow truck or whatever it is, there's three days to order 2023 vehicles, remember, first, second, and third, I believe it is, and if you don't put your order in during those three days and/or till it runs out, you won't get anything in '23, it'll be '24. Well, how many agencies have to have a board approve their vehicle purchases before they can make them? All of them. So I don't know how this is going to work unless they're already pre-approving things and saying, oh, you can buy this up to this amount, I mean, you'd have to do something like that, to be able to do it, so it's a wreck out there, so it's just, I got lucky and found somebody who had somebody cancel out of it or whatever, and there's a VIN number, so it's just been rough, it's been, we get grant money to use, but we can't use it to buy what we need, so. Anyways, this is dealing specifically with homeless students, to be able to pick up our homeless kids from the multiple locations that we have to go, many times have had to drive, like, as far as Urbana to pick kids up, so it is definitely a need that we have. That's my story on that. It's been fun.
A process. Can I get a motion to approve the Cardinal Bus Service quote?
So moved.
Second.
Jeremy, please call roll.
Mr. Ford.
Hi.
Mr. Bostick.
Hi.
Mr. Frazier.
Hi.
Mr. Mitchell.
Hi.
Hi.
Mrs. Mcmackin.
Aye.
Okay, that quote is also approved. Moving on to the second reading, second and final of our Niola policies.
See if I have any question on any of those.
It's all verbiage, right? Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Jeremy, please call roll.
Mr. Bostick.
Hi.
Mr. Ford.
Hi.
Mr. Frazier.
Hi.
Mr. Mitchell.
Hi.
Mrs. Mcmackin.
Aye.
Okay, the policies are approved. No one for non-agenda items, so we will be exiting, we will adjourn, and then we will be moving into executive session. No?
You need a motion to move into executive session.
Before we adjourn. May I get a motion to move into executive session?
Second.
Okay.
We will not be making any decisions at the minute.
Correct, no action to be taken. Okay. All in favor of moving into executive session? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will move into executive session.